And that reminds me.
Yours.
If you're gonna say something, step up to the mic.
Or, yeah.
I've had more people say, "I'm so glad you're doing YouTube, you know, YouTube Live and stuff like that, but it's so irritating when I can hear all the commissioners who are already down here." And then somebody, somebody out there says something in here. Got it. Okay, so here we go. So today.
So, welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting for North Idaho Fair Board Quarterly Update by our Executive Director, Alexia Jordan and Company. I am calling this meeting to order. It is 3:34 PM. Attending are Commissioners Brooks and Filios. Commissioner Leslie Duncan is attending a memorial service. And so, do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. First item of business, status of the 2020 North Idaho State Fair. Alexia.
Hi. Okay, does this work?
Yeah, 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 you're good.
Okay. We are coming before you today to get your thoughts and guidance on the 2020 North Idaho State Fair. Bill, you were at our board meeting last week. Was that last week?
Yeah.
And it seemed to us that there seems to be plenty of community support out there to continue to march forward with the fair. That is our plan. I have worked with Panhandle Health, our sheriff, and fire marshal have all approved our 2020 COVID action plan. I have a copy for you all. An extra, should you guys like one? Not only did they approve it, but they thought that potentially it could be too conservative and maybe we would want a secondary plan. Should things get better, we can move to that and release some seats. So, this is a fair with all of our grandstand events. That would be a concert at the beginning of the fair with a 25% decrease in capacity. Rodeo for four rodeo performances and a demo derby in the grandstands. And then, of course, all of your other events, including the livestock sale, exhibits, everything a full go with social distancing.
So, the rodeo and...
Yep, also has a 25% capacity decrease. So, I am, I think, looking for action from you guys. You agree that this is the right move for our community to have this fair and celebration in its normal format with social distancing and various measures in place provided.
So, you're taking all, all the necessary precautions you can. And my understanding is you're not forcing anybody to go.
No.
Well, you know, no, it's not a compulsory.
No, absolutely.
So, if you're not comfortable.
If you're not comfortable, don't come. Of course, we're gonna have a very flexible refund policy this year. We've never really done that in the past.
I think that's important. So, if people buy tickets and then the last day before the event or whatever go, "You know, I don't wanna go. I can get my money back."
Absolutely.
Good.
Absolutely. I do have an email from Leslie also stating her support that we move forward with all events, including concert for this year's fair.
You okay? I, I think it's an event that we need. Okay. Yeah, and Alexia and I spoke earlier today. We spent some time on the phone and went through the different scenarios and the potential risks and liability to the county. And let's face it, take a walk down Sherman, where's the social distancing? And so, I think it really comes down to individual responsibility. If a person feels uncomfortable, they don't have to attend. You have a flexible and very accommodating refund policy. I do also agree that it's probably needed so people can get the feeling of being back. I'm looking for some positivity right now. And so, and you're taking whatever measures you can reasonably take. And so, let's go forward. Let's start. Are you thinking of some scaled-down reasonable fireworks?
Do you know a sponsor?
Hmm?
Do you know a sponsor?
Well, I could work on that.
Heck, yeah.
Well, the, the thing is, the thing is, not to criticize the Chamber of Commerce, but if I were gonna cancel either the fireworks or the parade, I'd cancel the parade because people are cheek by jowl, three and four D. Sitting curb sign. Yeah, and, and when they're doing the fireworks, they're spread all over hell and yonder. So, fine, let them sit in a blanket someplace we're not.
We are talking about, hopefully, maybe we could do it over the Fourth of July, maybe the first opening night fair, adding some fireworks.
Something.
To the mix. And I'm actually visiting with the chamber director Friday to discuss if they would like to be a piece of that.
You're taking all available caution?
The best we can, yeah. I don't want to miss a ball, and I wish I did.
You got our support, it sounds like. And I don't know that we need a formal motion. I don't think it's necessar-- and it's not calling for an-- well, actually, it is calling for an action item. I don't think we need it, do we? Okay, I think we're fine. So, we okay then with item one? We're proceeding with the fair as described? Linda, you're okay?
I mean.
Yeah, by all means. Come on up.
As a board person, I am in support of doing it. Just like you said, our community needs this. There, in our board meeting, we had some conversation of whether we have the concert because we do have people standing close together. But, once again, I mean, be adult, be responsible. If you don't wanna be in that situation, we'll probably make some spaces which, they can be a little more spaced out. I mean, you know, to try to accommodate that. But, I think it's like Alexia says, once you open the gate and people are on the ground, you're at risk. You know, the risk is there. So, be it whether you're walking down the walkways or if you're walking, or if you're in the concert or sitting in the grandstands at the rodeo, it's, it's all there.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, the, the next thing is, what you're gonna talk about next is just the extra cost, you know, that... So, when we get into that conversation, how do we balance it? How do we be financially prudent about what our decisions are? But, other than that, I think it's a go. And I think we're gonna have lots of people from Spokane.
Ah, I was thinking about that. Because there's, did you say, Alexia, there's shut down?
Yeah, theirs is canceled.
And when would theirs have been?
A couple of weeks after August.
September eleventh.
Sorry?
September eleventh.
Yeah. But if they know that they're not gonna have one and we have one.
I think you're absolutely right.
Almost to the point where I think our conversation probably should have been maybe not, "Do we have it?" But, "How do we make it bigger?"
Yeah, and charge, charge all Washington plates double for parking. Hey, none of my, none of my constituents live in Washington, okay? As long as we're on that. Can we charge more for the river? Well, never mind, that's a whole other topic. Anyway, be that as it may. Okay, so then we're proceeding.
Okay.
And we'll move on to the second item, which is the CARES Act funding process.
Okay, so with this action plan, to take these steps, it is going to cost us more money. Not only does it cost us more money, but we have less opportunities to create revenue because of the distancing. So, this is rough. Do you know what I'm putting to you? It's super rough. And there's probably typos in there, so don't judge me too greatly.
So, this is, this is what you sent to the...
Yeah, I'm gonna go, may I?
This is a list. This is a list of extra added expenses, huh? All right, thanks. There's a lot of hand sanitizer in there. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. That's a, that's a company hand sanitizer, dry fly. They make, they make vodka, too.
Okay, so, again, rough, but this is what I could come up with in a quick moment, getting a few quotes here and there. So, we have to do things like this all throughout the grounds, not just one sign or two signs, but lots of signs. So, we're trying to have a little fun with it, you know, social distance yourself, two things apart. And so on. Try and make light of this situation.
No, that's good, good.
However, it costs a lot of money. And so, with the CARES Act, I am hopeful that this is reimbursable or... I don't even know how the process works. But, I hate to move forward with a fair knowing I'm gonna expend at least this much money, not knowing full and certain that I am guaranteed funding through the CARES Act. It, it pains me tremendously. So, I need to know where we're at.
Dina? Stage is yours.
So, Alexia did send the COVID team and you her lists.
Yes.
And we will be looking at that and applying their criteria that we've gleaned from the guidance that we have so far.
Yes.
Treasury Department. So, we'll look at each item, weigh it against what we believe will be reimbursable, and then we will let you guys know what we think will pass muster with that.
And if I'm not mistaken, you were up around, was it 205,000, there about?
Well, I mean, the 77, the 205 is if I added an extra day to the fair. If we opened on a Tuesday instead of a Wednesday to allow for...
No, I mean the COVID-related that you sent.
Right, 77,000.
Oh, this is it?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if that's all it. I'm, unless, I'm hoping you can clarify, you know, if we get deep into the fair and we're all of a sudden, we need something else that's related to that.
We can send for reimbursement as late as December 30th. So, at first blush, and I'm on the record, but at first blush, the first part, the 77, most of that stuff looks reasonable. We'll have to talk to the team about that.
Sure, okay.
Extra day. Well, I don't know if that would pass muster.
Sure.
But it looks like, you know, the supplies and, and keeping social distancing.
They're directly related to COVID.
So, so we'll crank through that with COVID team and apply.
Does the team, when you say the team, does anyone in our organization, or the team for that matter, make the ultimate decision, yes, this is, and no, it's not? Or, or is that determined in Boise or DC for that matter?
We would apply for reimbursement based on the criteria as we understand it. So, we'll go out to that website and we're gonna itemize everything.
Okay.
To be reimbursed. And then, if it gets processed and we get a reimbursement check, then we know it passed muster.
Okay. Do you get any kind of preliminary indication?
Well, if it's not listed as an allowable item, when we start doing the pulldowns, we'll see just what's allowed.
What's allowed and what's not.
But we have that list, so we'll be weighing all of that against the requests that we have. So, we'll be able to give you a pretty good idea.
Okay. Thank you, Dina. Thoughts, Bill? No, I just, I think we're all working together for the same outcome. Yeah, I, I would, personally, I would scratch the added day. I mean, that's, that's pretty hefty, 128,000, but...
Well, I mean, you know the facility and you know that in its peak hours, the ability to distance people in a walkway is really not. We will do everything that they've asked us to do, which is directional traffic flow on the grounds.
And you're making masks available, right?
Masks available at, at the gates, yeah. So, should you wanna go?
Where, where are you getting all your masks?
I don't know yet. I just pulled some quotes on, you know.
I ordered some when this thing started, you know, a pack of a hundred. Off of Amazon. Did you get them? No, I called up and asked why, and they said they're coming from China.
This was, yeah, so we need to make sure they can get here in time because this was a really good, 40 cents a mask. It doesn't seem like that.
Yeah, make sure you can get them. Okay, so that's where we are with this. And, Dina, when do you plan on submitting? Are we gonna be submitting different organizations at different times based on when you get their, their lists?
We sent out a communication, and I think you were probably on that.
Yes.
And I sent an additional piggyback communication Monday. Advising groups that hadn't already submitted expenses to our Special Fund 11 COVID fund to look at their expenses since March 1st to now to see if there's anything else that might qualify so that we can get those reclassified into Fund 11, into that bucket. And then, we'll start working on reimbursements through date ranges. So, the first date range would be from 3/1 to 4/30. So, we'll go through everything through 4/30, and then we'll look at May.
Okay, different intervals.
See what I'm saying? So, we, we wanna make sure that we capture, and then we'll do personnel and overtime in that segment. So, we do have a method, but right now, we're just trying to make sure that anything from the start of this till the end of April is captured. And then, moving forward, I think everybody got more comfortable with using those Fund 11 accounts, and they had to be passed by their liaison. So, we kinda have that second set of eyes and that board set of eyes on them before we submit.
Great way to do that. Okay, thank you again. All right. Sounds like you've got it under control.
Well, we're trying.
Okay, good, super. Because it's complex. And then add the property tax relief, and we won't go there. I won't go there. No, 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 okay. Sorry. Item number three. Are we okay with item number two? Are we okay?
Yep, yep.
Long-term plans. Master plan?
Plans. So, months ago, I came to you guys before there was ever COVID known to the world and, or that we knew, at least. We talked about doing a master plan and moving forward and seeing if you guys would potentially help fund part of that master plan. We still are gonna move forward with our master plan. I feel it is necessary for the fairgrounds, for the growth of our community, that we are proactive and, and we move forward with this. So, hopefully, in your budget cycle, there will be some funding for that. And again, if not, we're gonna still move forward. But the reason it is so important is, extension needs a new home. It makes sense for them to be with us. That fits into this master plan. I do not, I don't think our board wants to just keep piecemealing things out there. We really want to make the facility make sense for our future. And just plopping in a new building or, or taking away from the current exhibits buildings where we don't have enough space as it is and dropping in some offices to, you know, an old airplane hangar building that has no windows, no ventilation, no nothing, not even plumbing, it just doesn't make sense. So, we want to be their home, but we need to move forward with the master plan so we do it right. And that, that's just something I wanna.
And what was the, what was the cost for the master, was it 40?
Oh, boy. I really don't, I believe there's 40 in the budget.
40,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's, you reduced your request based on COVID, so that 40,000 is still in there besides the 80 that we normally use for.
You're not gonna argue with that, are you?
I'll look at it.
Okay. Anyway.
Will it stay there? Will it stay there?
Well, you, I mean, in running this entire county, yours is the only component that has emotional appeal. Well, maybe there are a couple of others, but, but it's more limited. Yours has the, yours has the broadest. I would probably, I'd say, I would say, extension is probably second, but anyway. What are you thinking in terms of a building, just roughly? Because if it's gonna house you and your staff and, and Sharla and her folks, go ahead, and her activities?
So, I think this is also why the master plan is so important, to have people who are experts in, in the fair field come in and say, "Here's what you really need," because what we think we need might not actually be accurate. So, I think what was in our mind originally was we were gonna have a larger, a sister building to the Jaclyn Building, but be larger. So, this would be an expo-type building for larger RV shows, car shows, you know, things like that, which would have our administration building tied to it. And it would likely be a two-floor building with conference area, breakout space for some of those conferences we get that need classroom-type settings. So, that would house them, it would give them storage, it would also house us and create, we were thinking off of Kathleen, it would have a drive-in area where you could access our building even during the fair without having to pay admission to come into the fair.
Sharla, how much square footage do you think you need?
Right now, the building we're in, when you count all of the square footage, we're about 6,000, which, when you look at what we have for staff, that fits pretty well with where they would not have staff.
But, planning for our future. They do have the biggest program in the state and have the smallest staff in the state. So, they're gonna need to plan for an extra office or two in time.
For, as far as office space goes, how much square footage do you think you need?
I don't.
Couple thousand?
A little less, really, 3,000. We don't take up a ton of space.
I think both of us would need a boardroom, whether we share it or each have their own boardrooms. These guys need a classroom that they can use, a large room, probably 50 people at least, at least.
So, if there were a secondary idea and that, that building couldn't come to fruition soon enough, that's where, again, if we had their input, could we put it up near our main gates to where people could access all of us outside of, you know, right off the street if they needed to? So, that would be over by government, and then it can be tied into that ticket booth we have, which is now our largest ticket booth, is our walk-up gate on government. So, I don't know where they're parking and coming from, but they're coming. That could work. That could be a little more obtainable than, than the larger building. So, I just think that this will give us a lot of information.
So, you're envisioning a building that can also hold events or venues?
Originally, yes. But if time is of the essence and that's, you guys need to move them, I think that smaller building, just an admin building, would be more doable in a quicker...
If we, if we had to do an admin building at, let's say, your combined nine or 10,000, let's just say 10,000 for round figures, square feet, square footage, when we were looking at, which we still are, a building here on this campus, you know, different application, of course, the figure we're looking at is about 230 per square foot. So, quick math, if, right? Yeah, okay, so quick math, if you're looking at 10,000 square feet, 2.3 mil? Is that about right?
Sounds like it.
Remember, they'd be dying.
Okay, sold. But ju-- just to give you a rough idea, because that's what we're looking at here in terms of price per square foot. So, that's just a guide, but it's, it's, it's hefty.
So, no, and I understand.
And that, and that is probably not gonna happen in time for September because you're talking about architect, you know, architectural drawings, that's gonna take a few months, and then we have to go out for bid. Getting you in there in September is gonna be a whole nother challenge, and I, but we're talking long-term plans now, so...
Repurposing any of the buildings that we currently have is, is not gonna be cheap either because nothing has plumbing at the moment. I mean, none of them have insulation, there's no windows. I mean, come, come take a walk with me.
I should, you're right.
Take a walk.
I will.
And if we can find a solution, we will.
Clearly, for September, we're gonna have to find something interim. I don't think there's gonna be any way around it. Now, long-term, which is really the topic of conversation, it's a whole different matter. But that's just to give you an idea. If we simply built an administrative building, forget the venues, you know, except for your, obviously, your, your boardrooms, right? You're looking at, at current prices, about 2.3 million.
And once, you know, once we have this document finished, we can do a capital campaign. We can raise money, and we can get more grants for funding for especially an ag building. I mean, there's, there's money out there that we can find.
Yes, yes.
So, it's, it's doable, but not without this document.
Not without, okay. And that's the 40 grand, Dina, that we've included in the budget?
Currently, it's in the budget. What about like a, like a model building? I know sometimes the schools, if they need extra space, they do a...
That's probably what we're gonna have to do for September, I think, as long as you have adequate space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I see this is the one they're, they used to, like a portable. Yeah, like a portable.
Yeah, that, that's probably what we're gonna...
Should be solutions temporary home for a while, and you could repurpose that for something else.
And schools do it, right? Schools do it as well.
I spend his classes currently in high school, portable buildings, so they're doable.
Well, and, and it's an interim measure. I mean, you know, but I think you're right. We need to, we need to do something with the master plan. So, you know, Dina says it's in the budget, so... You were only asking for help. Are you telling me we put the whole cat and caboodle in there? Oh.
No, I'm gonna do that. No, she asked for a lot more than that, and she cut it down to 40 when she came.
Oh, okay. She was very reasonable.
She cut her own budget right, right in front of you.
Yep. So, she raised it and cut it, okay. Are you headed for DC?
It's not the first time I've been asked that this week. No.
Anyway. Okay. Bill, any thoughts? Anything you wanna add? Anyone else? Happy. Okay. Yeah, Linda, please.
I would add my two cents first.
You know, I've sat on that fair board for an awful long time, and, and it just becomes more and more important that we have a long-term plan. We have a 20-year look. Because this community can use it and appreciate it, but it has to be done right. You know, and it has to be done so that when you come... You know, and it has to be done so that when you come into the parking lot, you go, oh, isn't that a beautiful building? Or something, you know? It has to be laid out so that things flow well and we get the right buildings in it that will function for this community and not waste dollars, but provide opportunity for people to do things. And so it just, it's vitally important that we do this plan, that somebody that's wiser than us, that aren't farmers and bloggers, and help make that decision. So...
And that you have a county commission that, you know, will, can rely on, that won't be capricious. And we're, we're working it right now, two years at a time, but you got us for now and you're stuck with us.
We're glad to.
For the next two years, thank you. And, you know, I'm glad you brought this up because, you know, often we hear, do you guys do any planning? And sometimes I have to stop and think, but we actually do. You're doing it now. AMPO does it. We're looking at our facilities. We have a five-year plan, if you will, okay, or a five-year budget. So we actually do. It may not be as formal as people would like to see.
Right.
But we do do it.
And we have in the past, you know, we did, was about 10 years, 15 years ago. We did a fairly good one, and then we've kind of just build on it and we've worked at it. But it's like, it's a bigger job, you know, than us people that are off doing other things really can do it and do it well. So it's just time to have somebody that's really good come and give it a plan.
How long, how long will it take to draft it, to complete it?
Typically, well, he said around six months, as long as I can get him to the fair, when we have a fair, and I can get him to...
So they actually have to see, they have to witness a fair?
They don't have to, they like to. It helps them get a feel for how crowded it really is or is it not as crowded as we think it is and how we could utilize building space better, things like that. So when they see it in action, it helps.
Okay.
They do quite a bit of interviewing amongst the community people. So fair just is a easy time.
Understood.
To gather that kind of data.
We're including the facilities that are in market and all this as well. So it's, it's the whole kit and caboodle, and it should really give us a good picture.
Okay, good. All right then, thank you. Any more public comments? Sharla?
I'll, I'll go take my mic, please. So, Charlotte Wilson, I'm here representing the Extension Office. We do have an excellent working relationship with the fairgrounds, and I can really see potential for us doing well. It's one of those, Extension is not just the 4H program, it's our forestry program, our master gardeners and their plant clinic, our family consumer science program. So we have a lot of moving parts within our office. But there's a lot of it that can really complement what goes on at the fairgrounds. I mean, 4H, I've been out there all week already doing events. So I'm really excited about the potential, but I agree with Alexia and Linda that we really need to have a good plan. So we're not just...
I pass her.
Not just sticking a building here because we can, because I've been around this area and I've seen these grounds long enough that I've seen that happen, that we put a building in because we needed something. But a few years down the road now, it's in the way, it's disrupting traffic flow, it's stifled the expansion or recreation of something else in that spot. So I really agree that a long-range plan, and I would be excited to see what, what we have for potential in doing a nice administration building, whether it's connected to a larger event facility, which I could see the community getting great use from, or if it's just a standalone admin building. But I, I'm excited about this. I'm really anxious to work with them on this future plan, so...
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay then, 404, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. Good meeting.